Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the River Falls Council Meeting from November 8th. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can we have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Cronk.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here. Okay, next we'll have approval of the minutes from the October 25th and meeting minutes and the October 11th and 25th workshop meetings and the October 25th closed session minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Two, three, two, second.
How's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to the approval of the bills with Mr. Bierstedt.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $1,369,244.67, subject to the Comptroller's review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time, if there's anybody in the audience. Otherwise, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one is a resolution approving the 2017 to 2019, the tree service contract. This resolution would give the contract to St. Croix Savitree. Number two is a resolution approving appointed of city treasurer and finance director. Mr., we would, the council approves this, we would appoint Alan Rollick as the city finance director and city treasurer effective December 1st, 2016. Number three is a resolution approving agreement between the City of River Falls and the Pierce-St. Croix Counties regarding shared ride taxi funds for the year of 2017. This resolution would approve the reimbursement agreements with both Pierce and St. Croix Counties. Number four is a resolution approving taxi service provider agreement, taxi vehicle lease between River Falls and Running Incorporated. Number five is a resolution accepting bid for transformer concrete containment structure. This resolution would give the award, would award the bid to T&amp;J Concrete for construction of a 24 by 30 poured concrete transformer pad and containment structure for the 69 KV Transformer. Number six is a resolution regarding special use permit and lease for Verizon Tower in Man Valley. This resolution would approve a special use permit and lease for the communications tower on the property owned by the city. Does anyone want to poll anything? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I propose that we move to accept 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of the consent agenda.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I just have a request. I know on a lot of our contracts that go out for bid, that we provide the top three results back. It'd be nice to continue to see those. I noticed in a couple of those consent agenda, or one specifically on the consent agenda items, that it only gave us the top one that staff was recommending. It'd be nice to have it a little more transparent for the public. I know we're making the right decision here, but it'd be just nice to see those top picks.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinances, resolution. Ordinance 2016-16, amending Chapter 12.06, which is residential parking permit system, Oakdale Avenue and Groton House addition. This is the first reading. This ordinance will add Zone AA to the city code to allow parking on both sides of the street in the Groton House addition for vehicles displaying valid residential parking permits, and will add Zone BB to the city code to allow parking on the odd side of Oakdale Avenue for vehicles displaying valid residential parking permits. The second reading and disposition will be November 22nd. Does the council have any questions? Otherwise, we will move on to... Number eight is ordinance 2016-17. This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of River Falls, Wisconsin, for the year 2017. This is for the biannual budget, is prepared for review and discussion with the public hearing, and final disposition on November 22nd. This budget includes fiscal years 2017, 2018, and includes all city funds, and our city administrator, Mr. Simpson, will give us a little overview.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just going to give you a quick overview of the budget. You received the completed budget that's also available on the city's website and the library and in City Hall for those that would like to get into the detail a little bit more. We'll also do a short presentation at the public hearing on the 22nd. We'll cover a little bit more about the ordinance itself and what you'd be approving, but we'll talk a little bit today, overview of that. Where does your property tax dollar go in River Falls? This is based on the property tax, the actual tax bills from last year. For every dollar of property tax, 45 cents goes to the school district. The City of River Falls, including the tax increment, is about 28 cents. The two counties, obviously you can only live in one of the two counties, but on a blended basis, about 22 cents. Chippewa Valley Technical College, about 4 cents, and 1 cent to the state forestry tax. So for every dollar a residency on a tax bill, that's the approximate breakdown. Our discussion this evening and the budget that you're working on is related to that 28 cents of every dollar. What does an average property tax bill in River Falls look like? This would be estimating the county levies, which haven't been in yet, and also doing estimate of the state tax credits, lottery tax credit and others, that most households are eligible for. On a $180,000 value home in River Falls, it will vary by St. Croix or Pierce County based on the apportionment, but this gives people kind of an idea of what the tax bills look like. In 2016, the most recent tax bill, about $3,724. The city portion was right around $1,000. Based on the proposal that we have in front of you, best knowledge we have about the equalized valuation, assessed valuation and growth in the area, and how the county and school district taxes will be apportioned to the city, we're estimating $3,493, the city portion about $980. So again, the caution here is we're trying to provide you a tool to understand what the impact is, but the impact is going to be different based on whether you're in St. Croix or Pierce County. Maybe that somebody in Pierce County, this happens typically every year, you know, the impact to that person might be $1,000, and it actually may be 960 if you're in St. Croix County, depending on how that's apportioned. So this is kind of a blend of all of the taxes, the best information we have to date, and we put it out there at the first reading of the budget just so people kind of have an idea. It gives them a better understanding of what the impact is of the decisions that the council is being asked to make. Once we have the final levies from everybody and we know the apportionment, then we obviously can give you a better take of this, and we would hope to do that at the 22nd. How is the property tax determined? Each jurisdiction, so we saw many jurisdictions there, taking out of that dollar. Each jurisdiction determines the resources necessary to fulfill its mission. As a city council, obviously, you use the strategic plan to guide and direct the resources to the things that are most important to the community based on the consensus of the council. Then, the council's asked staff to do a fiscal plan, which does about a 10-year lookout based on the direction we're headed. Then we do a budget plan that's two-year guide within that fiscal plan. That's what we've spent a lot of our time in the last few workshops on. That budget plan includes the funding and staffing for all the operations of the city, including the using property tax. It's important to keep in mind that we have a much larger budget than what the property tax provides, because we're operating several funds, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So the budget in brief, the discussion we're having tonight, just kind of talks about key items in the budget. This is kind of an outline of where we're at in the process. So you're now getting, the November 22nd action is adopting levy fees and charges, and also that budget plan you'll approve, based on strategic plan, fiscal plan, all the other plans we have in the city. So what action is council taking on November 22nd? You'd be approving a two-year budget plan. It's about an $83 million plan. It assumes adoption of a second year levy by separate action next year. So you can only appropriate levy one year at a time under state law. So you'd be passing a two-year budget. You'd come back next year and appropriate the second half of that levy. You're approving it by functional area like public safety, public works, conservation, development, general government, and then you're giving authority to staff to implement the plan that you put in front of them. So you've kind of given us, you've an idea of what your expectations are, and you put the plan in front of us, and then we implement that. You also take a specific action, legal action, which is approving a levy for 2016-17. That's the levy that will be portioned on people's property taxes and the bills they receive in December, with the first payment due in January of '17. So that's why we call it 1617 levy. So the levy proposed is $5,735,000, and you'd be authorizing the city clerk to levy those taxes on all the taxable properties in River Falls. The plan is summarized in your, in the budget document in pages like 1 through 36. Those are some of the key pages for people to look if they're trying to get kind of a quick view of what's going on in the budget. Major themes within the two-year budget plan are staffing. There's an emphasis on direct service. We've made a number of changes in our staffing over the last few years, putting emphasis on direct service employees, like paramedics, police officers, public works maintenance, and water resource employees. Those are folks that are working directly with the public in most cases, and that's been our emphasis. And we're also putting an emphasis in this budget in particular on succession planning, planning our future of staffing. Many positions in the city, we can go out, recruit good people, bring them in, they can learn the culture and the work, and so we wait till there's a vacancy, and then we hire somebody. There's a number of other positions that we feel it's in the best interest of the city to try to train somebody in before we have the vacancy in order to get a better idea of scope, and also keep kind of the efficient operations. And typically, those are in technical or operational positions, like water, wastewater, the mechanics and some of those positions. So there's some of those within the budget here that are funded on a succession planning basis. So we've actually upped the authorized staffing for a short period of time to kind of get us through some of those retirements that we expect future. There's a significant continued and deliberate effort on maintaining existing infrastructure. The council's been loud and clear that you want to do all these new things, but we're not going to forget about the infrastructure we have in the ground. This budget has a huge emphasis on taking care of what we already own and what we're already doing before we even get into the new stuff. So things like streets, forestry, parks, electric, water, there's work all over the city happening each year, and it's a significant part of this budget. There is a number of things that are a little more visible, a little more fun, I guess, for people to think about. Our major projects or efforts, and I've outlined a few of those there. One of the things that we've been experiencing in the community is growth in the property tax base. You can see in 2013, we kind of reached the low point, recovering from the recession. Back in 2010, you know, we were about 830, 840 million value community. We got down to about 800 million, and now we've had pretty significant steady growth, both in new construction and the growth in value of the existing sales of properties throughout the community, including commercial and residential. This budget includes a plan for revenues based on some assumptions on fees increasing. There's no planned increase for electric, water, or sewer. There is a planned 3% increase for stormwater charge. That requires a separate authorization by the city council, but it's important for you to understand that there's an, there's an estimate for increased revenue in the 2017-18 budget that assumes the 3% charge will be approved. If council decides not to approve it, you still have that opportunity to do that, and then we'll have to make adjustments to the budget. Also, we're planning and implementing a community recycling fee. If you recall, we made some changes recently in our recycling billing and took that back inside. We provided residents a reprieve and some fees that were on that bill included that helped pay for the compost site and other things. We're studying right now how best to capture the cost for kind of community provided things outside of the curbside pickup. So that would include the compost site, electronics recycling, and the fall and spring cleanup, which have been pretty widely accepted by the community as things that need to continue. So the question is, you know, what does that cost per household? Is it 10 cents a month? Is it 5 cents a month? And then the expectation by staff is that we would put that on a fee back onto the garbage bill. Again, that'll require a separate discussion and approval by the council, but we made a conservative estimate of some fees in this budget plan. Now, these slides, not intended for you to be able to read very easily, just kind of show you the size and scope of the budget. We have an $83 million two-year budget. Enterprise funds, meaning water, sewer, electric, ambulance, I know I'm forgetting one, or two. Those are business-like funds. They're obviously the 40, they're a large portion of our budget, and it includes purchased electricity. So obviously, it gets that, gets us to the $83 million in a hurry, because we're purchasing, I think we're in the 15 to 19 million dollars a year in purchased electricity. So it gets you up there in a hurry. It makes us a little bit unique from other cities who kind of show everything separate. We kind of put everything on the table for the council and say, here's all the money that we're expending across all funds. Obviously, the general fund is the one that gets the most focus, because it has the largest percentage of that $5 million of levy going into it. And we have special revenue funds and capital project funds. If you want to see a complete summary of the funds, there's a pretty good one, pages 161 and 162 of the budget document, that kind of lays out every fund and shows how it's broken down. It's pretty easy to understand kind of where the money's coming in and out, and it shows what the balance is today and what the balance is expected to be at the end of this budget year. So you can pretty quickly see where we're spending money in the different funds. The reason that that's important is because it helps you track, you know, what some people perceive or have seen in other cities where the shell game, so to speak. It's like, well, the general fund isn't going up, but look at all these 12 other funds that are feeding it. So we kind of put everything out there at once, so people can see the flow of money through the budget. The other thing that's important is we have a number of TIDS, Tax Incremental Financing Districts. That's one of our primary tools for economic development. It's important to keep an eye on those as a council and staff. It's a fiduciary responsibility we share. There's a map. Sometimes it's hard just to remember, where are the TIDS? So there's a nice map on page 137. It's pretty easy for people to see then, okay, what's the physical geographic boundaries of those? And then in the budget document, there's two or three pages on each one of those TIDS explaining what's in the TID, when it was started, and where it's at. So there's some pretty good information. If people are only interested in, what's this tax incremental district? I hear the city's putting money here, there, other things. You can read each of those TIDS pretty clearly, I think, in that budget document. So the general fund gets a lot of our attention, even though it is only 20 million out of that $80 million budget. But obviously, it's where people kind of traditionally see city government as. You can see we're not a lot different than most cities. Public safety and public works are the biggest chunks out of those, as well as general government, which people are experiencing today with the elections. That's a central function of us. It requires significant amount of training, direct and indirect costs to do that, and that would be included in that general government portion. Culture and recreation are things like the library, and then development is what you'd expect, planning and zoning and working with that. This is just a few highlights of the capital. Like I mentioned already, there's significant, significant maintenance of effort, and some increases in effort in particular on water, wastewater, and streets. In addition to that, there's some major capital projects that the council's asked staff to either continue to implement or begin to implement, namely Glen Park Plan, Power Plant Substation, which you just approved part of, the Kinnick Quarter Planning Effort, planning for future public safety facilities, which includes a feasibility study and also some potential money for purchasing land if we identify a need for additional space. Significant technology investments, that would be both kind of personal computing in the city, working with customers, backbone, infrastructure, and a significant portion of that is enterprise fund money from the utilities for their command systems, data management systems, and their customer interface systems, whether it's billing, outage management, or others. We're going to start to make some pretty significant inroads and investments into those technologies. And finally, the North Interceptor Sewer Project, which is to provide a new gravity flow sewer from St. Croix Street Outfall to the existing North Main Street Lift Station. So we're doing, in the middle of a routing study to kind of figure out what the best route for that is. We would do right-of-way acquisition if necessary, and then we do final design. The last stage of construction will be to remove the North Main Lift Station from service. So that would mean that the entire north area of town, then, instead of being served through a lift station next to the river there, as you just come at North Main Street, that would be eliminated, and everything would be gravity. So that's a pretty significant project, that depending on the route we take and the construction techniques we use, people might not even notice, but we're going to be spending a good amount of money to do that, and that's a long-term infrastructure. So that really is the conclusion of my brief, what I hope was brief, coverage of the $83 million budget plan. Appreciate the council's time and effort in the two workshops, gave the staff a real good idea of where you wanted to go, also your effort in the fiscal plan. I should mention that this budget is, in 2017, significantly under the fiscal plan projections for expenditures, and it gets pretty even with about a little bit less than the projections for '18, what we're going to be asking you to approve a levy for next year. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Scott, I noticed when you were going through the presentation, you talked about the dollars, but I want the people out there to realize, too, that increase that we're talking on budget is about 6.5%, 6.4% increase over what we've had before. So this isn't coming free. You mentioned the dollars, but I want people to realize it's a 6.4% increase in our budget that we're looking for. And that levy, that's, that's on top, as you mentioned, that's something on top. So that 5.4, 5.3 million, that's increase into what we're looking for, what, or what we're, not what we're looking for, but what's already there. So what we're looking for in this, the park, I'm going to use up the park, because most people know I've mentioned the park before, we have $1.7 million showed up there. But that's really just to go through the plans. What we're looking for is potentially $4.5 million, just for Glen Park. And I know a lot of people have come to me and talk, and I hope, if you're watching the show out there, if you read the, and I see Gret out there, I hope that people read in the journal that they come and talk to any one of us, council members, that about where we're spending their money. It's not our money, it's the residents of the city. So I want to make sure you realize, you out there in Cable Land, that we're talking about a 6.4 increase, and we're only, we're looking at our value for the city to increase by 3.9. So we're looking for a higher budget than what our value has increased. That's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else have any questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports. First one is about the River Falls Housing Authority, and Ann McAlpine, who is the Director of the River Falls Housing Authority, will give us a little presentation. Oh, wait a minute. No, you're fine. Sorry. Come on, Ann. Yes.
I'm coming to you with my sleeves rolled up and my toolbox at the ready. Thank you for last month's proclamation of the River Falls Housing Authority Month. We have concluded celebrating our 50 years as working as a tool for the city. We're part of the city's infrastructure. We appreciate your support in appointing commissioners and reviewing and approving any future plans we have for developing. We are here to provide housing to, for income-based rental units. We provide housing for seniors, for people with disabilities, for families with children. That's what we do. There's a whole lot of other housing in River Falls that we know is out there. We drive past it every day, but we're not a function of that, even though our name says "Authority," we're not. We only do this one thing. We access federal funds, and as you know, I've come to you before and said, federal funds are kind of short. They're getting back up there. We are now at 98% for our Section 8 voucher funding, so that means we can move up to assisting 65 families rent in the private sector here in River Falls. 50 years ago, the city council appointed our first board. They studied for five years the needs of the city. What did we need? We needed a broad range of affordable housing for families with children, for people who have disabilities, and for people who are over 62. They built 70 units. Now we have 265. We appreciate your support for that. We look to our vision statement for future planning. We have always asked that we be responsive to the needs of the city, that we don't initiate. It's not a, we're going to build a housing and they will come. We're going to look at what we can to find out what it is that the city needs. We currently have as our tool, our waiting list. We can look at our waiting list. Anyone can call us. We don't say we have 652 names, because that doesn't mean anything. We can tell you an estimated timeframe. Our estimated timeframe for senior housing is six to eight months. Unless, of course, you want to move into Windmill Place, which has all the amenities, the underground garage and all of that, well, that could range up to four years, but it could be less than that, depending on your income and the rent structure for Windmill Place. That's a unique little animal. So call us, and we'll spend an hour talking about that, if you're interested in Windmill Place. Our family waiting list could be as long as four years. So using our waiting list as a tool to determine, I'm seeing my red box on the screen up there. So using our waiting list as the only tool we have to determine what we would need to do in the future, we would say, whoa, we got to build some family housing. Maybe that's not what the city needs, because there may be other developers out there who know how to build and manage and develop family housing. We opened our Section 8 waiting list for the first time in four years. We received over 400 applications for housing assistance. That will put us over five years that a person would have to wait for that kind of assistance to receive private assistance for the private market rental in River Falls. Most of those, I would say 75% of those are from out of state. So maybe it's not just River Falls who has a family housing shortage for affordable housing for families. Maybe that's a nationwide trend, and we'll just need to keep our eye on that. We'll see if there's funding out there that we can follow that. Our goal is not to be the first one to do something unique to build housing for families in River Falls. Our goal is to respond to what you need. Our goal is to fill in the gaps. Our goal is to meet the need the private sector can't meet. So that's why we have been asking that city work with us to provide a comprehensive housing needs assessment. We have, as a housing authority, approved funding, up to $10,000 to do that, as a partner with the city, to use our resources to help us get a picture of what the housing need looks like in the future. Our occupancy rate, everyone needs to know that, we're typically run between 98% and 99% occupied. We right now have two vacant units. We have families committed to move into those on the 1st of December. So, home for Christmas. Our pilot in 2016, our payment in lieu of taxes, was $59,958. We hope that that money, as you have shown, is well-spent and goes to provide the services that support our citizens, the 265 people who live here in River Falls, and rely on you for those major services. In closing, I want to let you know that we're responsive, we're partnering, we're looking to work- to work with you in providing our housing, and we want to continue to bring our toolbox to the ready whenever you need us. Any questions about our goals, our future? Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, next we move on. We did the budget in brief already, so we'll move on to Administrator's report. If anybody's got any questions for Scott, or Scott's got anything for us?
I just mentioned a couple of things. First, I want to thank all the poll workers, including a number of city employees from various departments that were assisting with the elections today. I had the opportunity to visit each one of the polling places, and it was, I guess, business as usual for River Falls elections. Things were going very smooth without much weight at all, from what I could see. So we had a number of folks at those polling places, and they are open for another hour. I think our clock on the wall there is not, so they're open till eight, eight P.M. here. But again, a big thank you. It really shows the flexibility that we have as a city staff and the way that we can get around things that we think are important. So we were able to pull, we probably pulled from twelve different departments today to work on elections, and that many of them will be doing that for a few more hours this evening to help us with that primary function. Appreciated the cooperation of the school district. We made some changes at each of the school polling sites, and I think those changes were welcomed by the voters and seemed to make for a pretty efficient operation. There's also an exhibit, I had the opportunity when I visited the library polling place to take a look at the new exhibit in the gallery, and I thought that'd be of interest to most people in town. There's a number of the original fire insurance maps that are available for people to look at, as well as the work of Jerry McCully, who some of you have seen his work either at City Hall or University or the library. He does topographic models of the city at different points in time, so they've got six or seven of those kind of collected at the library for everybody to view, so you can kind of see these, these models, make the maps come to life. And there's a number of maps of city growth and neighborhoods being annexed and aerial photography, so it's kind of an interesting display for anybody that has a little nostalgia, and it's also good for people that maybe just popped in River Falls in the last seven or eight years and want to kind of see what things were like before it all kind of sprung up in the nineties and two thousands. So I'd encourage folks to get out there, and as always, those exhibits are free. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
I'd just like to make a comment on the Administrator's report. We're constantly seeing, this is a great report, we're constantly seeing updates from public safety and the work that they're doing in community policing. I'm using that term generally over public safety, but I see a list of things that Chris Godfordsen from the Police Department, our Fire Safety Education Officer, Pauline Williams, and what Jeff Rixman does here and down in Prescott. All the community education they're doing, trying to bring the community together, I think that's a great, great move in the right direction. They've been doing that for years. It's awesome to see you guys doing that. Thanks.
Anybody else got anything?
Mayor? I'm sorry, Mayor Tolan. I'd just like to welcome Alan Rollick to our meeting tonight. I don't think he's been officially introduced, and I'm sorry I didn't get to him earlier not to...
Stand up and take a bow, Al.
Yeah, right.
All right, Al.
Just want to welcome Al to the city team, and we're happy to have him, and it's going to be wonderful.
Anybody else got anything? Otherwise, we were going to do a closed session, but there's no need for it now, so we're going to skip to closed session, and it's up to Dave. Opposed? We are adjourned.